Call this meeting of the Del Rapids City Council to order. Welcome those attending this evening and welcome to those who might be watching via the webcam. Appreciate your interest. Our last finance officer now, please call roll.
Schmidt.
Here.
Orchard.
Here.
Hawk. Garrett.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Ron Salkin. Berg. Merritt Early.
Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Some move.
Moved by Bob to approve the agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Bill. All favor sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Noy, and then we'll carry. Next is minutes of September seventeenth regular meeting. Mr. Garrett.
Okay, I have an addition on the free rubble site, free technology drop-off days. Should read Saturday, October twenty-seventh, Thursday, November first, and Saturday, November third. I would like a motion to approve them as amended.
Moved by Mike to approve the September seventeen minutes as amended. Is there a second?
Some move.
Seconded by Bob. All favor sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Noy, motion is carried. Any visitors to be heard tonight? I guess not. We'll move right ahead. Old business, Highway one fifteen utility project, Justin.
Attached in the packet is pay request from T and R contracting for the Highway one fifteen project in the amount one hundred ninety-one thousand nine hundred forty-nine dollars and one cent. Lance is here to update the council on the progress that H and W contracting is the T and R subcontractors doing the utility work for the city. Obviously, weather is playing a part into their, into their progress. They are out of the intersection on Forest Street. I know that they're still working on the storm sewer utilities, but the water and sewer has all been completed. There's water and sewer that needs to go north yet, past that intersection. It's kind of questionable, depending on how everything goes, whether or not T and R is going to let them tear those sections up, for fear that they might not be able to get those finished and paved yet this season. And then I think they, they also need to go under the river, correct?
Yes, yeah, under the rock, you're right. They've still got that water main. They've got the casing installed way across. They've got the water main pushed through it. They capped on the end there, but they've still got to go underneath. They were waiting for that July-August timeframe when everything dries up real well. We didn't have that this year, so now they're kind of waiting to see. It'll be something they either get done towards the end. I don't know if they'll try to do it after it freezes or not, but we're still kind of waiting to see how the DOT is handling stuff. Right now, they're just trying to get as much done as they can with the weather that they do get. I know this is kind of a area here everywhere, contractors have been saying along, this is one of the worst years they've ever seen, if not the worst, for just having it wet and then maybe having a few days dry and then rain again and then it just, they've never gotten any consistency on it. Except for the Garfield project, that was the one that really hit that just perfect timing. But no, and as for that, they, they pretty much, right now, they've got all the water sewer. And an update today, I think they got all the storm sewer done as well on Forest Street. So now it's up to T and R, they did some box work on those as well for the intakes. And now they're going to start getting ready to prep the road up for paving. So that's all, it's fallen in line. It's just, like I said, just coming a little late right now with some of the weather and that they've had.
Going out west, that all, is all a storm sewer that they're going to be putting in, or?
Yes, there is storm sewer, and that's kind of what H and W has often been doing right now. They've been, they've got all their stuff done on Forest Street. So now they're jumping out, trying to keep up with T and R and do some of those west culvers. And I think they'll probably spend majority of the week doing that.
There's a load of, load of, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, there's a bunch of stuff they got to get done, as well as then, you know, that stuff heading to the north. Like I said, the contractor hasn't made any reference to us yet to say that we're not going to get them. And they're just trying to get as much done as they can. It's just, it's October first today, so it's, there's a lot of stuff to be done yet, so there's always that fear anticipation, you know, this, if we get a cold spell coming quick or we get an early winter now, that could, that could wreak havoc on a lot of these projects.
If they progress enough to start doing the paving on Fourth, the intersection, I'll have then going down to Third where there's, you know, that's going to get all ripped up again, so they can put concrete there, right?
Right, that's, yeah, right in that Third Street intersection. And they did, I think they put temporary asphalt in there for now. They put that. I said, I talked to Terry the other day, he says, yeah, I'm really glad I hadn't do that now. I didn't expect to get what we were going to get, because then they'd really be in trouble. But they said, yeah, they've got that. So depending kind of how things go, there's still a manhole we have to install there at Third Street as well, because they just tied in the existing lines, so we're going to replace that manhole on Third Street. So we've got that manhole on Third, we've got that crick crossing there. And then we also got the rest of that going up to the north there, up to where Subway's at. So those are the three utility pieces they've got. But I think right now, they're just kind of step by step as they go, so they don't want to get too far ahead of themselves right now, so.
The, the work going north is on, is going to be, that's on the west side of the road?
East side of the road.
East side of the road.
East side of the road is the most part, when they're boring underneath the road to get a bicycle, because there's still some cast iron water main that's between Subway, that's right in front of Subway. And then it changes to PVC there, so we're going to get all that. Then everything going that way, that is already PVC now, so you're going to have all PVC out and up the road. That'll all tie in. The sewer will all be upgraded too, so that now you've got your line size right, so coming down into the, into the station now. So that will all be taken care of after this project.
Just to get to it.
Yeah, we're just hoping for a warm November. And so for this last part of it, and some of this stuff, they have done some work earlier on in the year, but they never, we didn't ever do a pay application, just, they did some small work that was on the casing and stuff. So this incorporates that, and they did a full month on this last one. So that's where the amount due on this, yeah, one hundred ninety-one, almost, just about two hundred ninety-two thousand dollars for this pay application, for the, for the work they've done this last month up to September twenty-first. So just request a payment on that. Any other questions from you guys on?
If they don't get the utilities north, will that affect anything, you know, if they only go as far as they can?
It won't affect anything on, like, everything's tied back in.
Oh, okay.
Sewer and water and everything else, so everyone will still, will have service and everyone, it'll still function properly. It's just a matter of once they can go.
Yeah, I understand that part, but I just.
They'll just have to come back in the spring and finish.
If they don't get, whatever they don't get done. And the thing is, is our contract, since we're part of the DOT, we're just side planning onto that. So we're following all the DOT timelines. And when I asked Terry the other day, hey, have you guys done any extensions? He said, well, the DOT, they're going to, they said, just get everything done first, then we'll talk about the time extensions. So I haven't heard yet how far back. They're just trying to get as much done as they can.
Yeah, I understand.
And we'll just have to see what happens if we get shut down or not, but.
Well, yeah, all in all, I mean, I guess I'm impressed by the, you know, every opportunity they've had to get out there. They've been there. I mean, you know, when it can do things and.
And they've been pumping, I mean, they get, the intersection gets full of water. They're out there on Saturday or Friday, Saturday pumping the water out and trying to keep moving.
Any other questions, Lance? Entertained a motion.
Move to approve.
Moved by Mark to approve pay re, application for pay number one, I guess it is. Pay request number one.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mike. Any other questions? All favor sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Noy, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lance. New business, property donation. Lot four of Lot five, Timber Ridge Edition in Portion of South fifteen. She's Del Rapids, so that's a school edition. That's a normal.
Yeah. So attached in your packet are two maps. So if you guys want to follow along with these, these are, you kind of place them side by side, like so. Okay? So this is a portion of property that is, that's owned by Councilmember Mark Crisp. It was installed, when was it installed, Mark?
Five years ago.
Five years ago or so, okay. They're at the point in their development when they are, when they're going to be plating some of the final lots in the development. And Mark approached me about the city potentially taking this over as a, as a public sidewalk, you know, to add to our trail system. Mark has installed this on his own, with his own dollars. The city did install this, this section of Rebecca Avenue, the north-south link that goes up to the elementary school. That was done once the elementary school was open, to provide access to the backside of the elementary school. And then the, the school actually built a sidewalk that goes up to the back side of the school, to the playground area of the school. So Mark has approached about donating the property and the sidewalk to the city. This would be from this fifteen-foot strip, fifteen-foot wide, north and south, and about, I estimated about four hundred and sixty-five feet east and west. So that would be from the Rebecca Avenue, right away east to this Lot three of the Timber Ridge Edition. And then the, the second map here reflects the, the development's going to be plating these lots, and they would be plating a Lot four. And this Lot four would, would also be donated to the city, which also includes a sidewalk. There is a section of Lot three where the sidewalk runs, but that is in an easement area. All lots have an easement in the rear of those, of these lots, a public easement. So this would be essentially the council having a discussion about accepting this as a donation. The city would take over the ownership, the maintenance, and, you know, any future maintenance, no removal of, of the sidewalk area. You know, myself, I've observed and have heard from many people, people that actually live in this development and in the, around the neighborhood, surrounding neighborhoods, tend to kind of do a loop that consists of going around the retention pond in the twelfth street area. That would go down, go up, or south to Tenth Street, come down Tenth Street to the area where there is sidewalk now, at the, at the Friendship Village, and then continue west to this Rebecca Avenue area, and then north, and then back up into the Timber Ridge Development. People walking dogs, people in the winter just trying to get out, they, they tend to use that as a public path today. So with that, open up for discussion on this topic.
Where the, this, this thing, where, where does the school district's boundary, on here?
It is that fifteen-foot line.
We originally sold the school, the whole thing.
Right.
And then I bought that fifteen-foot from the school to do this.
Okay.
And so you would own, if, if you accept this gift, you will have the school on the north side of you, and you will have Orchard Hills on the south side of you. You'll own a fifteen-foot strip in between, all the way down.
Okay, and then right here is where they have that, that's a.
That's the retention pond, yes.
All right, good thing, okay. Questions?
I, I should mention, yeah, Justin asked whether, whether we should have this on the agenda. I, I'm not aware of any legal requirement that the city accept a gift, but I, I think it's a good idea to have something in the minutes, just to show that it was discussed. So that's the reason it's on there.
But then, yeah, and Dean has, has begin, began the draft of a quitclaim deed, which would deed the, the property over to the city. This is a preliminary plat at this time, that would, that plat would need to be filed before that quitclaim deed could be signed and executed and reported.
Why quitclaim can be a warranty deed?
Or, or.
It can. Yeah, I guess we haven't done any title work or anything, but, yeah, if there's any.
I'm not saying it is.
Doesn't make it, no, there's no mortgage.
Whatever, I mean, that's just.
It's good business.
That's what we had, we've, we've done in the past with other property, we've accepted. The city accepted that corner at the intersection of Highway one fifteen, when Greg Ammon and, and that group owned the old car dealership, where the Dollar Store and Casey's is now, they owned all the way over to the corner of the intersection, and they, they quitclaimed deed that area to the city. That's the last one that we had on record for accepting property as a donation.
Are there any other questions? Move to approve. Moved by James to accept the donation of the aforementioned property. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Any other questions? All favor sign if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Noy, motion is carried. Okay, next is Del Rapids Transit and the twenty nineteen budget issue.
I'm just going to start this, I want to explain this to the council, but I'm going to ask that this, this council not accept or approve signature of this agreement this evening. There's some digging that I'm, I'm doing on this, on this particular issue. And so just wanted to preface the conversation with not expecting a motion from the council tonight on this topic. Attached in the, the packet is the, the city's grant agreements with the state, and this includes the fifty-three eleven federal money, as well as the state, state grant money to operate the transit system. We were surprised to, to discover when we received this agreement that the city had, we did receive the same amount of fifty-three eleven funds as we were anticipating and have in the past, but we did not receive, we received about a sixty cent percent reduction in our, in our state funds. We have received about seventeen thousand or eighteen thousand dollars in the past, and we only received a grant of seven thousand three hundred fifty-eight dollars, according to this agreement. Therefore, we would be about ten thousand dollars short with what we have budgeted, and that would mean the city would need to come up with, with the additional ten thousand dollars as a city match to operate the transit system in two thousand nineteen. You know, with, so I visited with the state DOT, well, ICAP was the one that informed of us of this. Visited, they just told me to call the DOT. Visited with that gentleman, I have a meeting with him on Friday, because we're going to be in Pierford Municipal Conference, so I'm going to meet with him on Friday morning. There is supposedly a, a new formula that is put in place that's based on performance. And this performance-based formula, they, they take into account costs, cost per ride, the amount of rides given, the cost per mile of each ride. So what they're doing is coming up with an award system that provides more efficient transits, transits with more funding, and those that aren't performing high, they, they get their funding cut. What I don't understand is in a rural or area or a small town, you're going to have less rides because of population, and, and then you're also, you're, you're going to have the same fixed costs. You're going to have the, the fuel, you're going to have the, the automobile, and you're going to have the, the staff. So you're going to have the same fixed costs as a, as a, as a big operation that might be transporting a full muscle load wherever they go compared to us. That might be even taking three or four people at a time. So just going to meet with the state, kind of find out what's going on here, because it's obviously a big hit. We would have to come up with, with the funds somehow. What this is, if you kind of read into this, do you remember about a month ago, we had a discussion about possibly consolidating with ICAP? And I think what this is, is a method of forcing our hand to, to do that. They're trying to create efficiencies, and the state sees that it's more efficient than us operating our own and applying for our own grants and applying for, you know, all the paperwork associated with meeting all the federal guidelines. You know, ICAP's doing that. ICAP's doing that for five different transits. It makes sense if all of us were just ICAP, or whoever we would choose to manage us. So I think that they're kind of forcing our hand, and so have this meeting on Friday and get some more information on, on this. I reported last meeting that we had received a grant for this bus barn. So we're going to come up with sixty thousand dollars to help us build a, a bus facility and come up with another ten thousand. So it's just, we need to take all these things into consideration before we're making time for decisions on, on anything, so. Any feedback from the council on any questions you might have that you would like me to forward and ask?
Have the other communities experienced the same reduction in funding, or?
They wouldn't give me that information.
I asked Brandon, she hadn't seen it yet.
Yeah, Brandon hadn't received their, their grant funding yet, so I don't know where Hartford's at. ICAP received a reduction. They also do East Dakota Transit, East Dakota Transit received a, a reduction in costs to, or in their grant. So, I don't know. It seems like it's being targeted at rural, and they're going to redish, I know, I've heard Brookings got more funding. So they're going to redistribute the rural, small towns to the bigger towns, which I, I told them. I was frank with them, and I said, this ten thousand could potentially shut down our transit in twenty nineteen. So, I mean, that's a big dollar number to have to come up with, especially if we have to do it continually. You know, we can come up with it for one year, but doing that continually for several, several years might be difficult for us. And they didn't give, give you any explanation why, like, why we're low performing? He gave me, that's where we're going to sit down. He said, I'm not prepared to do that over the phone with you. And I said, well, I'm going to be in Pierford Friday, so, or this week. And so we're going to sit down Friday morning, and he can explain these, this formula. He, he said that it was a formula that all the transits came up with.
Who, who are all the transits?
Yes.
Well, all the transits meet annually, or a few times, and they've got powwows that they have across the states. I guess this has been something that's been in the works for a year or two.
I'd say one reason, or one thing that I could think of, you know, we have our old school bus system, transporter Haven kids, you know? Because I drive that, and there's a lot, I'm sixty, seventy kids on bus.
Right.
Well, they all rode, trained the bus, but of course you'd have, I don't know how you would handle that many at a time, but.
Right.
I mean, that would sure get your ridership up. I mean, that's kind of hurting our ridership, I guess, for Del Rapids. It's very efficient.
Yeah.
The way it's done, I mean.
I've thought about that too in the past.
Our busing system, plus the way we pick up sixteen different spots in town with the rural buses on their way in, very efficient, which would be another, if they didn't do that.
Right.
You'll be having to get on, pull on all the kids on the bus, the transit bus, but I know you have to have a fleet to handle that, though.
Right.
But I can see how with our school bus system, how that really cuts down the traffic.
Yeah.
But it's still used.
One of the things they say, well, you know, they go find, go find the money, raise the money through donations, or go to the United Way, or it's been one of their responses. And as a municipality, we can't do that. We cannot solicit donations. But, and then their response to that is, well, have you thought about consolidating? Because ICAP can, can try to get, they're a nonprofit, they can solicit donations. But then the community's going to have to be pitching in to keep this thing going, so.
Well, I'm all for the transit system. I guess, I guess it's very good for the community. I mean, not that I.
What we've emphasized is, you know, we've been aggressive about expansion. We've added days, we've added drivers. We're, we're on an expansion mode, trying to get this out to the public more, and then you turn around and tell us, and cut us by ten thousand dollars? And potentially, I mean, I don't know if it's an empty threat, but, you know, saying this could, this has the potential to shut down our transit, when, when we're usually contributing twenty thousand and, you know, you're going to double here to put another ten thousand dollars on top of that, so.
My question is, how do we get our cost per ride ratio now? I mean, what do they expect us to do, and what do we, you know, what do we have to do to do that?
I would think as a small town, if our, if our cost is high, they would give us more money to make that lower. To me, it does seem like the small rural areas would be subsidized. Right, yeah. Compared to that. So that's what, there's, it's just kind of some new individuals in this administration, in the DOT, that are, are pushing for, for this consolidation. And I think this is a way to force everybody's hand, so.
So what?
Yeah, well, I haven't played the governor card yet.
So, so let's just, let's.
We've run out of time.
Let's assume we'll five, you know, we're consolidated, and so that's going to, so that's going to change the,
I don't.
The overall number?
Well, that's what I, I mean, that might make us score better. I don't know, that's what.
Because you're looking at, they're looking at the whole thing instead of looking at five.
Right, they wouldn't be just looking at us, they'd be, we'd be mixed in with all of ICAP's. Hartford and Flankrew and East Dakota, and everything they manage would be under one. So maybe that cost per ride is, you get better scores, I don't know. Well, if that's the case. Well, the, the, the other thing is, is that, you know, we pay ICAP, they submit a grant for us. They do all the paperwork associated with these federal and state grants. There's a, there's a safety plan, there's a, what's all the, there's like five different plans that we have to submit every two years.
And there's a federal on it.
Yeah, there's the, so there's, just for Del Rapids, if, if, if they can have just one of those instead of five of those, that's creating efficiencies. And that's what the state's pushing for, rather than having all individual administrations of all these transits. Which in theory does make sense, but we lose our local control of our transit. I think as well, we're struggling with. But if it grows in the end, who cares? You know, it's, that's the same thing that Suelan went through when they were trying to get the county. Nobody wanted to give up control, but in Del Rapids, you never get.
Tell us about that, let her know.
Yeah, I'll always make trade thoughts. You know, I mean, that's, this kind of, I guess, filters back into that discussion about that again, about that consolidation, which we should continue to, continue to have. So I had a point there, but I skipped my mind, I apologize.
Well, maybe Friday will be beneficial, maybe.
Figure out what, what the reason why it is.
In your memo, you said the federal grant was eighteen thousand prior year, and it looks like in the new one, it's twenty-two four ninety-eight, so I don't know if I'm looking at the same number.
Yeah, I think you're right, Dean. It's, yeah, it's twenty-two, it's twenty-two.
Was it?
And that, that was, that, that was incorrect. It's twenty, I was thinking about this one.
Oh, okay.
Because that's about seventeen-nine, so I apologize. That should say twenty-two.
Okay, so that did stay the same.
Yes, it did, that stayed the same. Okay, well.
I guess my question would be, you know, God forbid if we don't do this anymore, how's that going to affect, what's going to do for the, that bar that we're supposedly building?
Yeah, my question. Well, we would, I think we haven't accepted or done any grant, we haven't accepted any grants yet. I think we should.
See this.
See what happens. See what happens with all of this before we, we get to that point. Of accepting that grant.
Okay, thank you, uh, next item is the transfer of funds in the twenty eighteen budget, Claire, Justin?
Attached to the package is a memo from, from Finance Officer Department. Um, annually, within our, in our annual budget, we have, um, transfers from fund to, to, to fund. For instance, we've, uh, historically for years transferred money from the liquor fund, uh, a portion of the ten percent, um, tax that we have on the, on the liquor, that we have transferred from liquor fund over to the general fund. Um, in this case, it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, we have equipment replacement, we have, uh, the general to the wastewater fund is the, uh, the Southeast Infrastructure, Second Penny Sales Tax that we dedicated for the Southeast Infrastructure, uh, or the Southeast, um, Sewer Extension.
Sorry.
We'll get it confused with the new project. Southeast Sewer Extension, which put the lift station, uh, south of the river, um, that's, that's to make the payment on that loan. There is, uh, liquor, equipment replacement, um, and then there was one additional, uh, that, that came about from, uh, a situation with the library.
So, if you didn't read the memo, um, basically Brittany went to, um, Office Max and they did one purchase and they forgot something and they made, they tried to make another purchase while the credit card company flagged it as suspicious. So, she couldn't get what she needed to get and while she was in Supal, she had a few other things that she would get and normally will put it on the general fund credit card, um, and so she, I believe she also went to Target and it was denied there as well. Uh, and then, uh, so it was at three seventy, three hundred and seventy dollars and some odd cents. Um, that came out of, um, her fines and deeds fund, uh, which everything that she purchased was budgeted in the general fund. Uh, she subsequently found out, she just called the, the credit card company and they actually cleared it, uh, with what she was trying to purchase, uh, within a couple hours, it's, so she was fine going forward, but she just asked that that money be replaced.
So, what, what the council needs is a motion to, um, to do these, uh, do the fund transfers. Uh, legally, uh, it is not, Claire's not capable of transferring from one fund to another, that has to be a council motion.
Okay, motion.
Moved by Bill to prove the transfer of funds as listed in the memo, is there a second?
Some move.
Moved by, seconded by Bob, any other questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, motion's carried. Claims, time to pay the bills, claims payable? Moved by Bill to, uh, authorize payment of claims, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mark, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, motion's carried. Administrator and Finance Officer report.
Couple of updates, I included in the, in the council packet, the staff, um, recommendations on the, the joint meeting of the Minnehaha County and Del Rapids Planning Commissions that was held last week. Uh, this is for the LG Everest Conditional Use Permit, uh, the, the Planning Commission met with the, uh, with the Minnehaha County Planning Commission and this, uh, conditional use was approved unanimously. Um, there wasn't anyone in the audience, uh, that, uh, spoke up in, in opposition of the conditional use, uh, that LG had requested and this is for the West Quarry, uh, on the southwest corner of town, um, that lies within the joint jurisdiction area. The, it's the main gist of, of this, and this is just a FYI to the council, um, the, the main gist of the conditional use is that, uh, the extraction line, and I believe there's a map somewhere in here, was, was larger than what the original conditional use, so this is an amendment to their original conditional use. That is within this packet as well, the original conditional use. The extraction line basically goes out to, uh, Quarry Road, um, and then down to that four seventy-fourth Avenue. There will be a fifty foot, um, offset though, from the right away, that, that they have a setback of fifty feet. Uh, so that was the main thing, uh, so that they have the ability to, to extract rock out of that area. Uh, another major aspect was they currently are only allowed to blast one time per day and they have instances when they, the blasts don't go as planned and, um, they need to get a little bit more rock off the shelf or the, the shot didn't shoot as much rock off as they expected. So, they, they received, uh, a permit to, to blast, uh, up to three times per day. Um, there, that was, so a cap of three times per day was placed.
Is that only on the west one?
Only on the west, this is all we're talking about, it's the West Quarry. Um, another big one was the allowance to install an asphalt plant or concrete plant on the property. You know, the past few years, they've been, have this asphalt plant over here, they don't plan on having an asphalt plant every summer. Uh, but as everyone knows, that created, you know, right next to the city park and everything on that side of town, created kind of a haze and city did receive multiple complaints about it, so that was something we were in support of, that's hopefully the wind will blow, uh, another direction. But, you know, there, it's not really anticipated, they don't anticipate having a plant set up in, in near future. You know, a lot of these asphalt projects in our area have completed here recently. Uh, another one was the allowance to do water the, into the Big Sioux River like they do at the East Quarry. Right now, the conditional use states that they have to just use it on site as dust control and there's too much water, so they'll go to the DNR and get a permit to pump that into the, into the Big Sioux River, that was allowed.
And they re- they, uh, they require them to test that water before they dump?
I think that, yeah, whatever the DNR's requirements will be for the, for the watering, so.
And how far is this new blast area from our, from our, uh, four million dollar SPR that's sitting on?
Well, it's across the, the road.
Sitting on?
Yeah.
Fifty feet.
Fifty feet, yeah. I mean, they were, they were basically probably three hundred feet before maybe, I don't know. I mean, uh, maybe a little bit more than that, but, uh, you know, they, they burned that up now over there.
Well, I'm, I'm more worried about the shock from blasting.
Cracking the tanks.
Because I know it shivers the hell out of my house when, when they blast over there, I can't imagine, you know? And they're sitting right on top of rock over there with that.
Right.
Brand new thing that we got. What happens if it starts cracking?
I think there's enough rebar in that thing, but.
Yeah, it says, uh, repair lagoons, but it doesn't say anything about repairing those.
Was that in the?
Yeah, that was in there before.
The original.
Yeah.
Well, they're worried about lagoons back then, they shouldn't be worried about this thing.
I guess I don't have a great deal of experience, I don't have a.
No, no, I'm just.
I mean, I know, so, you know, they, they have tests that they have to, they, they, uh, hire an engineer that comes in independently and has a Richter scale.
I've seen it set up down there.
Right, and they, yeah, they're, they're set up on Third Street, they've got a hole where they go in through and, uh, they have a permit up to such a level and they, they're like a tenth of that, of that level, they're way under, I know. I mean, I know you can feel it, I don't.
Should've been here thirty, forty years ago.
Yeah, I suppose.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, they, they do use these millisecond, um, micro blasts now that, that have taken that down quite a bit, um, so.
Well, I just, I just wanted to mention it, you know, so.
It does say landowners within fifteen hundred feet can request a pre-blast survey of all buildings on their property. So, I don't know what that means if.
It's, it's a, it's a legitimate point.
Just to check for.
Cause it's sitting right on.
Pre-existing damage.
Quartz, it's melted because they had chiseled it just.
Yeah, they were right off. They, they shipped delay right off. Sitting on rock, that's right.
Were you at the meeting, Justin?
Yes, I was, yeah.
Was there any discussion about reclamation?
That's part of this.
I know, but I, there, there's a twenty thousand dollar bond for reclamation that I thought.
That was probably not covered much.
Well, you know, our East Quarry is what, three hundred feet deep and probably a hundred acres, so, you know, how many million truckloads of dirt that would take to fill that hole? So, I don't think it's likely they would, but, but how do you reclaim them?
It would most likely be like whatever was the, Lake Lorraine was a former quarry, right, and it's developed around that.
Yeah. You have to turn it into a lake, but, and I, and I don't see that happening probably in our lifetime, but, you know, it's.
Will they just become big reservoirs for the city of Supal's?
Right.
Probably.
Let them fill up.
And nobody can figure out quarries and want to fill up with water?
You'd like the one down by John Morals, fill up with water.
Heck, there's one even on the, uh, fairgrounds.
Yeah, that was still in operation, it's getting close though. I, I will contact them about the pre-blast survey, I think that's a, that's a valid point. I mean, I don't know if there's a impact distance between three hundred feet and.
Well, it's a shockwave and it disperses as it goes, but the closer you are.
Yeah, I, I can feel it in our office at noon when they blast, so it's.
So, I mean, we're across the street and it's on the rock, you know, plus it's covered and then we might as well do it.
Right. Just a note, uh, municipally conference is, is this week in Pierre, myself, uh, Claire, uh, Mayor, Attorney Hammer will all be in, in attendance at that meeting, so, uh, Diane Benn is gonna be staying back this week too, so that they'll be available at City Hall if anybody needs anything. Uh, attached to the packet is my, uh, the city administrator performance evaluation, I also emailed a digital copy. If you can get, uh, that filled out and sent back to the mayor in the next few weeks here, um, he's requested that too. Truck route implementation, um, today is the official day of the truck route being implemented. Um, our signs have not arrived yet, um, they should hopefully be here this week. DOT has their signs ordered too, cause they're going to be, um, installing those within the DOT right away. And, um, so hopefully in the next week or two, we will see the DOT putting up, uh, the signs in the DOT right away. We have, uh, provided the maps to the, the quarries, um, provided the maps to the Sheriff's Department and explained what the intent of the ordinance is, um, you know, we've asked them to be light on enforcement, especially without the signs up at this point, but, you know, being that, uh, we've instructed the quarry to go ahead and start using the, the new truck route. Um, with that said, the, the stop sign at Centennial is, is gonna be addressed too, but I, I, I gotta talk to Clarence, I'm not, he didn't do that today, I don't think. Uh, but we've talked about how we're gonna handle that with paint and a kind of flag at this point. And we've looked into the flashing stoplight, they're about a thousand dollars, um, I just need to work on Clarence with that one, so. That's, that's still under discussion, but, like, of course. But, um, since that's never been a stop sign.
Right.
So, it's been a yield sign, so.
I drove through there today and I was trying to think if it was a stop sign or not, I don't know. It's been a yield sign for a long time. So, that, that light up railroad crossing sign over there on the beach was a thousand bucks?
That I don't know, I, I.
Seems a little expensive, or something is simple.
I could ask.
But for the so, I mean, you can, you can plug in directly a power, but there's no power out there, so we would do a solar one and the solar units or?
That was a solar unit, yeah. There's solar cell, um, I could ask Tim Smith, okay? I'll take a picture or something like that.
But we don't know when that's happening.
This week.
This week. That should be something that probably goes out in the text too.
Yeah, we can do that, we can definitely do that.
Uh, it's kind of a domain, but do we, we have any idea when the railroad crossing stuff's gonna go in?
On the one fifteen?
Yeah. I had more comments about.
About the bumper?
What the hell's that cement there for?
I know two people that run into that, so.
Well, I know, so they do, there's, there's a lot of rubber.
Why are people driving in the middle of the road, but?
There's quite a few people on Facebook that mentioned, put some orange paint on it or something, cause it, you know, if you're not paying attention.
Orange paint leading up to it.
Well, it's all black now.
From, from my deals with that company, uh, Tom, is that they won't show up until all the sidewalks are installed.
Right.
Because what has happened to them before is they went to install a signal, the base of the signals.
And then it's right on top where everybody?
Yeah, and then it's, well, you need to move it over, you know, whatever, two feet. So, he's, he's pretty much come to the conclusion, when the sidewalks are in, and that's when he'll come back in and install all the signals, so.
So, is that what, what those raised areas are in the middle of the?
Yeah, I mean, that's basically, uh, the cross, it's gonna have cross bus. They're gonna have gates, yeah, and then, um, and then it's basically so you can't drive in between them, that's why those are, are set up.
Unless you have a bicycle. Yeah, it's, uh, new, newer and better.
No, it's great, I think it's great to just, we have to build things like that to keep people out of something that's flashing.
Anyway.
People are in a hurry, James.
Yeah, that's for sure. I'm gonna question about the junk on either side of the new bridge.
Yeah, I've, I've emphasized the DOT is that, so they better have a fine tooth comb and a, and a.
Metal detector.
So, that stuff's not popping over the ground for the next fifty years.
Yeah.
We're putting the rails on today, I guess.
So, they're about finished with the project then, I mean, that's gonna happen before. I mean, can, can DOT hold X amount of money or something until it's all cleaned up?
We'll talk about that. The one property is owned by the, the lumberyard on the, on the island there. Or no, excuse me, the co-op, the co-op, sorry, the co-op holds that, so. Cause I'll tell them to be hard, I, I will tell them to be hard on them about that, so that we're not having to reclaim that and junk.
Well, I'm, that's, that's one of the first things people see when they come to our town and sell it.
It's that particular contractor isn't the most organized.
And that's fine during the, during the construction, I mean, do what you gotta do, you know, I just wanna make sure it's all cleaned up.
They've kind of gravitated onto the city property over there too and we didn't really give them permission on either side of the bridge to be pushing their way out and they, they just kind of gravitated in that direction too, so we'll be hard on them.
Which kind of leads to a question that was asked of me as far as the leaf drop off out there.
And that's open.
That is open.
It's open, yeah, it is open. You can get access to it pretty easily. You just stay, they're not, you know, where those mill wheels were set, they're not past those mill wheels, so there's, there's plenty of room over there. And it's all accessible now, so.
Um, moving on.
Moving on, uh, yeah, the Overlake Trail is, uh, about ninety-five percent complete, I'd say, they've been, uh, uh, there's a circumstance that occurred, uh, with that seven inch range we got last week where it had some undermining over a section that they poured. Um, and they brought in flowable fill, DGR instructed them to do that and they, they have that installed. And, and that, everything looked good there, the, they have the sections of trail that were an issue that I reported last meeting were, were cut out and, uh, and reinstalled, uh, they poured the final pour and they, uh, have, uh, backfilled, um, that whole area and they've got black dirt, so they just really need to seed at this point, that's about, that's about it, so. That, that trail is in, um, anything else on that Lance?
No, he's got a little, I just talked to him before I came here, so, yeah, there's a little more grading, he's gotta do the billups and shoulders and stuff, so he's gonna work on that here the next few days and I did talk to him too a little bit about the seeding, just to say. I did talk to him too a little bit about the seeding, just to say that, you know, it's, right now is not a good time to seed, um, so we'll have to kind of look at the, they, they've got everything completed, and everything's within the contract of what they're doing, now technically. They could seed between now and the twelfth, but if you do that and it sprouts up an inch or two here in the next couple of weeks, then freezes, it's gonna kill it off, so, I told him. Tom, I was gonna talk to Justin and that, and probably look at doing a dormant seed, uh, maybe get it seeded here towards the end of October, you know, right around the end of the completion date, so, we may. Push back the date a week, or, I think we got until November second, or something like that is for final completion, we may just give them a little time just to get that dormant seeding in, and that way, hopefully then this, it comes up nice in the spring, and it, it will go from there, but. That's just, kind of just how timing went, with things, with the weather and everything else, I mean, I think they were on track to get it well done into September, but it just, they lost a little bit of time, so. But, yeah, everything else has been going well, there's, I think one more panel they're gonna propose right now, but other than that, considering the screening, then they'll be ready to go, so.
And, uh, when we're talking about the trail, you know, where all the construction's been done, and the, you know, are they gonna have to? Is any, is any of that gonna have to be replaced, or is it, hasn't been destroyed because of the, you know, the work around the bridges on the trail?
I think that was part of their plan, was to replace them, I think they were actually moving some of the ground too a little bit, just cause it got wider and that, but I think they have, the way they set it up, I think they're. Ramp it back up to get up to both sides of the bridge, I don't know, whatever they have to do on that, but, yeah, I mean, they'll fix it.
Yeah, they're, they're going, the part that went under, that north bridge, that's all being replaced, that's part of that.
That's part of the job, yeah.
Yeah, that comes up to where it comes up underneath and curls back around, yeah. Campground project, Comfort Station has been moving, they've been, uh, um, we have seven inches of rain filled up a big hole there, and they pumped that out, and they've got that backfilled and giving that prepared for con, more concrete. Um, Prunty is gonna be here next week and start, um, assisting with the, uh, with the utilities installation. So, uh, still have a window of time we can get, uh, that project, um, moving here before the end of the year. Uh, Asphalt Villanoverlay Project was, um, was done last week, Double H was in town, uh, they did that, that spring metal drive was kind of the big, uh, section there, and then the section along Old Seventy-Seven. Um, next to the hotel in the Villmar area, um, Tenth Street had a little section, uh, East of Garfield, that was, that was replaced as well, um, so have that, uh, completed for the year. Uh, the, they have completed the sandblasting of the water tower too, and will start painting here, uh, next week is the plan, so, uh, you know, the window of time for them to be doing that's closing too, so. Um, they are, we're, are probably gonna end up rolling, um, the, rather than spraying, the winds have just been too much for them to have that shroud down. Um, there was some, uh, debris matter that did end up at some of the neighbors' property, and I've received calls, and they've been good, they've been going over and, and cleaning people's properties where some of that sandblast debris had spread too. Uh, but they're, they just needed to continue, or they're gonna run out of time, so, they were just, they just needed to get it done, I don't know if anybody, like, drove by, they were working Sunday, uh, so, they're, they're scrambling, uh, just like everybody else is.
It looks like they put, like, primer on it already, so it's kind of.
Yep, yep, they, they, as soon as they were done sandblasting, they were coming behind with primer. And they did test the interior as well, and all those tests came back, uh, positive for the mill thickness, uh, they, they did a good job in the interior.
Yeah, the inspection of the interior was, was done. Then, when, when it gets time to fill that up, will we go through, they'll run a bunch of water through there to flush it out and stuff like that?
I don't know what the sanitation process is like, I don't know, I'll have to check a little bit, I don't.
Read that too and give them a load.
I'm sure there's a sanitation process that they have to do in order to be able to fill it again.
It was interesting when they, the week, you know, in the week when they drained the tower, and it was for like, two different mornings, the water was just a little bit.
Murky?
A little murky, you know, oh, how about that, you know, and they don't wanna wait, and I'm guessing that when they start, that starts pressurizing again.
It'll probably affect that.
They'll do it again, it could, or, could have some consequences there, but anyway, it's.
Probably.
Yeah, so. So, uh, Justin mentioned about, uh, his review, and if, uh, if you've got comments, please get them to me as, as soon as you can, uh, I would appreciate that, so we can get to working on that and get that together. You know, it's, it's, uh, we'll, we'll move ahead and, you know, plan to get that done, and if you don't get any comments to me, then that's the way it is, but if you can, uh, you've got an email, or you can mail it to me, I don't care. But we can get that, uh, moving, that, that would be appreciated, uh, I, I had mentioned to Mark at the last meeting, uh, we're, we're gonna leave on the eighteenth, uh, going back east, and so, uh. We, I'll be here for the next meeting, but that first meeting in November, Mark will be, uh, in charge, in fact, he'll be in charge for three weeks or more, so, we're going back to see my brother and the whole, doing all that stuff, so. But, uh, otherwise, I think we're, things are moving along pretty good, yeah. Entertained a motion.
Some move.
Well, glad you're quick, Bob, is there a second to Bob's motion?
What's a motion?
To Jared.
Oh! I'll second that.
It's been seconded by Bill, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carry, thank you gentlemen, thank you very much, thank you, Claire, thank you, Rupput.